We have reached warm. At this time, I would call the regular meeting to order. And I will call the regular meeting agenda item number two, invocation and pledge of allegiance. And I'm going to ask Mr. Perez to lead us on this.
Yes, good afternoon, everyone. And our invocation will be led by Pastor Joseph Raimentos from New Hope at Border Church. And our pledge of allegiance for Boy Scout Isaac Espinoza. If you can all please stand.
Let us pray. Father God in heaven, we hallowed your name. We declare your all-powerful, majestic, and yet a personal God who is in our midst today. And as the mayor and his council meets, we ask that you will give them wisdom by first instilling not just in them but us who watch them, who listen to them, who work with them. Instill upon us that fear of God. Father in heaven, we ask that in the midst of our diversity, you will show us, as you work in us and through us, that there can be unity. In the midst of our differences, backgrounds, religions, education, we thank you that as you stand before us and yea even walk with us and even surrounding us from behind us and protecting us from above us, we could feel as we know in your word that you have our interest in your heart. And thus you will allow us through our leaders to come to that decision that would be good and beneficial to the community, but more so to you. Help us to realize that it is you who have put these individuals in positions of leadership. And ours as citizens in this community is to respect them, to honor them in every decision us coming from you. Thank you now for your Holy Spirit who is in this room that will superintend everything from beginning to end. We thank you for what you will do because we ask this in Jesus' precious name and for his sake. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a picture with the pastor and the? Pastor and the? Now I will call on regular meeting agenda item number three. Mr. Perez.
Yes, Mayor, we have Isaac Espinoza here with us. He's from Boy Scout Troop 84. And we have a question we'd like to ask to the mayor and the council.
Hello and good afternoon, everyone. My name is Isaac Espinoza and I am a live scout for Boy Scout Troop 84 of Mission, Texas. I am currently working on my Eagle Scout rank. And to attain this rank, I must plan and lead a service project for any religious institution, any school, or my community. I have chosen my Eagle project to benefit my community and Lions Park, the park in which my weekly Boy Scout meetings are held. Ms. Perez, a representative, has tasked me with completing shelters that will benefit Mission Possible organization. I created four of these shelters. And these will help for temporary housing for the stray cats that are currently living inside this Lions Park. I was required, there are no required service hours to be performed, but in the completion of this project and the people who helped me, we totaled 142 service hours. These houses are designed for the cats and will be placed in a secured area so that no damage or vandalism will be done onto these houses. And with that said, protection from the elements is hard to find for these stray cats. And as a frequent visitor of the park for my weekly meetings and commute, I do notice that there are many cats that do live inside these parks. And so being tasked with this project really spoke to me and the people of my troop. So these houses will benefit not only the cats but Mission Possible as well. That is my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you for, Mr. Espinoza, for everything that you do, especially, you know, for contributing to this community project. We appreciate your help. And we'd like to present you a certificate of appreciation if you want to come up here. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. This evening, I'm proud to present to you Ms. Yvonne Shoup, Sofia Garriaga, and Emma Salzettl. You're here representing the Girl Scout Troops 272. The girls were working towards receiving their Bronze Award, which is the highest level received by junior Girl Scout. The project was to collect essential items for the mission shelter. A fundraiser was held in Petco in Mission two weekends in April. Hereby, they collected seven beds, toys, 732 pounds of canned and dry food, 69 pounds of treats, 22 dog bowls, blankets, and vichysps. A special thanks goes to the troop leader, Isabel Shoup. And a congratulations to the girls for a job well done. On behalf of the mayor, city council, Mission Possible Advisory Board, and the Health Department, thank you so much for your time, effort, and dedication.
My name is Sofia Garriaga. And I want to say thank you for supporting your idea, reeling around animals and helping the community. I learned how easy it is for even even about 10 and 11-year-olds to make a difference.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Emma. And thank you for Mr. Zapata, Mr. Garza, and the city for believing in us. We are glad that we could teach people about Mission Possible and that we could help so many animals to find their forever home.
My name is Ellen Shoup. And I'd like to thank the city for trusting us with this project. I'd also like to thank my big sister, Ellen, for supporting us and not just telling us but showing us that we could do big things.
If y'all can please come up here, we appreciate everything that you do for our community and our city. Thank you, y'all, for the certificate of appreciation. Thank you.
Calling regular meeting agenda item number five, proclamation on the Older Americans Month. Ms. Carrillo.
Mayor, Council, good afternoon. With us today, we have Mr. Alex Guerra from Amigos del Valle, the executive director. And the proclamation reads as follows. Wheres Amigos del Valle, Inc., includes a growing number of older Americans who enrich our community through their diverse life experiences. Wheres Amigos del Valle is committed to strengthening our community by connecting with and supporting older adults, their families and caregivers, and acknowledging their many valuable contributions to society. Wheres Amigos del Valle, Inc., recognizes the importance of bringing together all generations and engaging in activities that promote physical, mental, and emotional well-being for the benefit of all. Wheres Amigos del Valle, Inc., can enhance the lives of older Americans in our community by promoting home and community-based services that support independent living, involving older adults in community events and other activities, and providing opportunities for older adults to work, volunteer, learn, lead, and mentor. Now therefore, we the city council of the City of Mission do hereby proclaim May 2019 to be Older Americans Month in the City of Mission and urge every resident to take time during this month to recognize older adults and the people who serve them as essential and valuable members of our community. Proclaimed on this the 13th day of May, 2019.
Do we have a representative, somebody?
Yes, we have Mr. Alex Guerra here from Amigos del Valle.
Do you want to come forward?
Want to approve? Mayor, we're going to need to vote.
Let me entertain a motion first.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second? We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, same sign. Motion carries and congratulations.
I just wanted to say thank you to the mayor and the council for this recognition. And we have our property right here around the corner. So you're more than welcome to come visit our seniors. And we have a couple of them here. We have Ms. Linda here, who is our president of the council.
I just want to thank you for everything you have done for us.
You're welcome. Do I want to come over and take a picture? Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
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 Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming, ma'am. Now I will call for regular meeting agenda item number seven. Ms. Carrillo.
Mayor, Council, we've got some representatives here from the Adult Protective Services. If they can come forward, Ms. Melissa Castellano, Mr. Hugo Gonzalez, and Amelia Marichalat. The proclamation reads as follows. Wheres people who are elderly or have disabilities have contributed to the general welfare of this city by helping to preserve customs, convictions, and traditions of many people from diverse backgrounds. Wheres these residents are vital and integral members of our society and their wisdom and experience have enriched our lives. Wheres abuse of the elderly and people with disabilities in domestic and institutional settings is a widespread problem affecting hundreds of thousands of people across the country. Wheres in 2018, there were 116,578 completed cases of elderly and disabled persons abused in Texas, of which 84,439 were confirmed. Wheres elder abuse is grossly underreported because the elderly who are being abused find it very difficult to tell anyone and are usually ashamed and sometimes afraid. Wheres elder abuse happens to men and women of all income levels and cultural and ethnic groups where they are in good health or incapacitated in some way, in poor neighborhoods, and in suburbia. Wheres many of these cases investigated by Adult Protective Services in Texas involve self-neglect and it is our duty as citizens to reach out to people in need. Now therefore, we the city council of the City of Mission do hereby proclaim the month of May 2019 to be Elder Abuse Prevention Month in Mission, Texas, and urge all citizens to work together to help reduce abuse and neglect of people who are elderly or have disabilities. Proclaimed on this the 13th day of May, 2019.
Second. Second. And this is open for discussion. Any discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Daphne Melissa Castellano. And we've already introduced our supervisor, Hugo Gonzalez. We also have Frankie Menes and Margot Barredo. We all work for Adult Protective Services and we're passionate about our jobs. I want to thank you all for proclaiming May 2019 as Elder Abuse Prevention Month in Mission, Texas. Almost a decade ago, the U.S. Census Bureau reported that 3.8 million people in Texas had reached the age of 60 or older. That number is expected to triple by the year of 2050. This fast-growing population is expected to strongly impact our families and communities. National research has shown as many as one in 10 older Americans are abused or neglected each year. And for every case known to programs and agencies, 24 are unknown. Available data from APS is as follows. In 2018, there were 3,200 cases of abuse-neglector exploitation in Hidalgo County. And we validated almost half of those cases. Older Americans are vital, contributing members of our society. Their welfare is everyone's business. Raising awareness and taking steps to prevent it in our community by educating the public on the issue and what to do when they suspect abuse-neglect or financial exploitation of an elderly or disabled adult is critical. All one needs to do is suspect that it is happening and report it confidentially to our hotline number. That is 1-800-252-5400. Or you can make a report through our website. Thank you.
Thank you. Regular meeting agenda item number seven, Ms. Carrillo.
Mayor, Council, with us here today, we have Mr. Robert Tony from Bikers of Christ. And we have Mr. Andrew Cannon. And I think there's other members. If they can please come up as I read the proclamation. The proclamation reads as follows. Wheres motorcycle riding is a popular form of recreation and transportation for thousands of people across the state and nation. Wheres motorcycles are a common and economical means of transportation that reduces fuel consumption and road wear and contributes in a significant way to the relief of traffic and parking congestion. Wheres the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration and the Motorcycle Safety Foundation have named May as Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month. Wheres states and motorcycle organizations across this country will be conducting a variety of activities to promote the importance of motorist awareness and safely sharing the road with motorcycles and remind riders to make themselves more visible to others. Wheres the City of Mission wishes to promote the safety campaign of the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration in their efforts to ensure the safety and well-being of all. Wheres all highway users should unite in the safe sharing of roadways throughout the City of Mission, Hidalgo County, and American Biker Association, and with all others on the roadways. Now therefore, we the city council of the City of Mission do hereby proclaim the month of May as Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month and urge all motor vehicle operators to join in this effort to keep our highways safe. Proclaimed on this the 13th day of May, 2019.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move to it for a second.
Do you have a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Mayor, City, Council, people really appreciate you bringing a little bit of awareness to our situation. We just represent a wide variety of the public, all kinds of professions, all kinds of people. But the one thing we got in common is we like our freedom on the motorcycle. And in Texas, I'm sure everybody can appreciate that. There's one more thing we do have in common on those bikes. Some people say we face death daily. Sometimes it feels like it when you're out there on the expressway on a motorcycle. Not all bikers, but a lot of bikers, probably all of them, say a prayer before they ride. Quite a few of them carry a bike or Bible. Because as much as the chief here, he does a lot with his officers in helping us, keeping us safe, protecting us, the first responders that show up when we do have accidents. But as much as all that is and the awareness that comes here, one day, each of us will lose this fight. And we will pass them to eternity. And this book does have the answer. With your permission, I would like to give this to a man among us that most likely doesn't need this book, a man of the highest integrity and honor, your city attorney, Mr. Bob Galligan.
Do y'all want to come forward for a picture? A regular meeting agenda item number eight. Ms. Enriquez? Oh.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm filling in for Brenda today. She's currently out of town. I just have a quick update on behalf of the chamber. As previously announced, we have a new tourism director. And currently underway is with getting that role up and running, conducting some market research in the area to make sure that the initiatives taking place are effective for our city. She's currently working on a brochure that's going to be distributed, an attractive brochure that highlights the gems of the City of Mission to attract visitors to those locations. She's recently attended, in the attempt to market research, attended a three-day, a two-day ecotourism conference at the Benson Rio Grande Valley State Park. And really attained some great research that we're hoping to take back and put into play. We're also currently working with the Lower Rio Grande Valley Economic Council to get Mission, Texas...
Mr. Perez, or if there's any council that would like to ask any questions on any departmental reports.
Mayor, I'm going to approve the report, subsequent to Senate.
We have a motion and a second to approve the departmental report as presented in writing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Regular meeting agenda item number 10, citizens' participation. Ms. Carrillo, do we have anybody?
Yes, Mayor. Our first present will be Rosalind Olivares and Sylvia Rodriguez.
Are you present? Do you come forward? Just state your name and your address for the records, please.
Rosalind Olivares, 509 Mayberry, Mission, Texas. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, and city officials. My name is Rosalind Olivares and I am a citizen of Mission. I am here today with my fellow community members, advocates, rescuers, business owners, vet marines, educators, nurses, taxpayers, and most importantly, registered voters. We are a group of concerned citizens here to voice our concerns for the abandoned, neglected, and abused animals wandering in our city. Gandhi, a famous humanitarian, said, "The greatness of a nation and its moral progress can be judged by the way its animals are treated." Well, Mayor, if this is true, then our city has a long way to go. And although we have programs in place to help animals in the pound, we are still far from making any difference. We need the current animal abuse laws that are already in place to be enforced. Animals are sentient beings, defined as creatures that can suffer and feel pain. With this said, that means that all animals feel hunger, thirst, cold, heat. They feel pain, sorrow, and fear. The basic of all needs is required for all animals, food, water, and shelter. If I run a red light, I will most definitely get a $200-plus fine. If I don't wear a seatbelt, I'm going to get a ticket. If I make a rolling stop, I'm going to get a ticket. All of these are punishable by a fine or possible imprisonment. However, when our animals, such as this one, is shot in the face and he's thrown at the city pound, nobody is held responsible for him. He didn't even make it to San Antonio. There was a group willing to pay for all of his vetting and he didn't make it to San Antonio. Or this one, who we thought was burned alive, but he wasn't. What happened was the owner was treating him for mange. That mange doesn't happen overnight. That's months of neglect. No one was held accountable except the defendant, the defenseless animals who was under the care of this abuser. Where is the justice? Simple things such as a pair of scissors to cut the hair of a dog who was so matted wandering outside of his home. Half a pound of hair was so matted, pulling and tugging him, and his hair, he was in constant pain. If these owners would have had their dogs registered, this would not have happened. The City of Mission does have an ordinance in place that all dogs must have their rabies vaccine and must be registered. By registering their pets, we can show accountability of how many residents are pet owners and ensure that they have their dogs vaccinated, which will protect the community. This will also show us who are the citizens that abandon their pets. Not only will this help, but by charging the $2 registration fee with a population of 80,000 people and if only half would register only one dog, which we know a lot of people have more than one dog, but if they only register one dog, we could be generating annual income of $80,000, which would be desperately needed for the upkeep of our city pound, provide its community with future services such as low-cost bays and meters, vaccinations, and microchipping. Microchipping is already a law in Brownsville, in Harlingen, something we definitely should consider.
Hello.
I would like to remind everyone, you have three, you have three minutes.
Sylvia Rodriguez, my address 4019 Hillcrest Drive, Mission, Texas, 7573. Breeding, breeding is illegal. It's been, it's a Texas law. It's been illegal since 2012. We also know it's illegal in the City of Mission. Yet we see countless animals being sold on the streets, in the flea markets, and online. This definitely needs to stop. We need to find these backyard breeders and penalize them. We as a community need to know how many dogs are captured, owners surrendered, and the number of them being destroyed so we can see that, so we can see that we do have an overpopulation problem in the City of Mission. By knowing how are the exact numbers of overpopulation, we will be able to apply for grants and get the help that our citizens need. Change, we need change. How do we start change? Change begins at the top. We must lead by example. We ask that all employees for the City of Mission, also members that serve on various boards, be aware that the laws be enforced and that they will need to have their pets vaccinated and register. This can be done at vaccine clinics, done at least four times a year in our community. We know that change will not happen overnight, but at least we can get the ball rolling. Communicate to the cities, to the Mission citizens that the laws will be enforced and penalties will be given. By, I'm going to add this, we didn't have this, but it's very easy to communicate to the citizens that penalties will be enforced. We can do it in the water bill. Everybody gets a water bill. We can just type something in there. It's free. It won't cost the city anything. Thank you.
Anybody else, Ms. Carrillo?
Yes, Mayor. We've got Ms. Virginia Townsend.
Ms. Townsend. Please state your name and your address for the record, ma'am.
Virginia Townsend, 1603 Vintage Lane, Mission, Texas, forever. I noticed on the executive session that you have the resignation of Gus and possible replacement. Now, I know it's legal. Don't get after me, Bob. I know it's legal. I'm just saying, I would have liked it better to be an open session. It just doesn't seem right to have it in an executive session. Doesn't seem to fit. It just seems like those kind of things should be done at open session with all the people. Anyhow, thanks.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, Mayor. We have Ms. Lisa Rivera.
Lisa.
Mayor, City Council, good afternoon. I'm here with Rosa Rivera, Executive Director for the Texas Citrus Fiesta, Carlos Garcia, Third Vice President of Texas Citrus Fiesta, Ricardo Saldana, 2004 North Bryan Road, Mission, Texas. I'm the Second Vice President of the Texas Citrus Fiesta. On behalf of the Board of the Texas Citrus Fiesta, we'd like to thank the City of Mission for a successful Vaquero Cook-Off this past, not this past weekend, but the weekend before. We were expecting anywhere from 17 to 20 teams. We ended up with 32 teams. Very successful, family-oriented cook-off. Turned out to be a beautiful day. It turned out to be great. Randy, you ate 15 ounces of brisket as one of the judges. I know you enjoyed it. Even our visiting mayor from Sillanoa participated in it and she had a blast eating the 15 ounces of brisket that Randy and her shared in the finals table and the regular table. But again, one thing that we would like to echo, one of our biggest sponsors was the City of Mission. City of Mission, thank you all very much for supporting our efforts. Two, the Parks and Recreation Department for the extreme support and hard work that those men did on Friday and Saturday. My hands off, my hats off to them for a job well done. The other thing is, we'd like to thank TLC, Mr. Alfred Bella for letting us use his facility. MCM Sporting Goods for one of our biggest sponsors also, and Mission CISD as another sponsor that supported us with the stage for the bands and for the, for the dancers and all of those good things. But the main thing, oh, and our partners, the Mission Police Department and Fire Department for being there and supporting us. They were a very big part of all of this. They were all there and again, on behalf of Oscar Martinez, our First Vice President, who was the spearhead of this project, and both salute the President, thank you all very much for your constant support of the Texas Citrus Fiesta. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Moving right along, we're moving into public hearing, 1.1, planning and zoning recommendation. 1.1A, Mr. Azarell.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1A is a public hearing for a rezoning of Lot 6, Block 168 of the Mission original townsite from C1 Office Building to C3 General Business. The applicant is Tomas Robles. And if the council is inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On April 24th, 2019, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of East St. Marie and Tom Landry Boulevard. Surrounding zones include C1 Office Commercial to the north and to the east. To the west, we have C3 General Commercial, and to the south, we have R3 Multi-Family Residential. The future land use map also reflects this area as a general commercial, G.C., designation. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff and our city manager are recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1A is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the rezoning? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the rezoning? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the rezoning? I don't see anybody approaching the podium, therefore I'm going to close the public hearing and I'm going to open it for any of the council persons that have any questions. If you have no questions, then I would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 4787 or not adopt it.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion and a second. We open it for discussion. Go ahead, Ms. Carrillo.
What is the size of the lot?
Size of the lot is 50 feet wide and it's 150 in depth.
Okay, but it's, okay, it's 50 feet depth from Tom Landry, basically.
From Tom Landry, it's 150.
Well, from the alley to St. Marie is 150, but deep is only 50.
It's only 50, yes.
Okay. So that will limit the C3 use.
It will limit the C3 use substantially, yes.
What could you possibly put there as a C3? You can't put a convenience store, you can't put...
We've seen some, some office use along Tom Landry, which right, it's very limited. The applicant is proposing a little commercial building, maybe one or two suites with a rest being parking.
But no raspastas?
No raspastas with drive-through windows, correct.
Any other question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Adoption of ordinance 4787 is approved and I call for 1.1B, conditional use permit. Mr. Azarell.
Thank you, ma'am, Council. Item 1.1B is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and all type consumption of alcoholic beverages. This is at Taqueria 39. The address is 2813 East Griffin Parkway, being Lot 1 of Adams Crossing subdivision. The property is owned C3 General Commercial and the applicant is Jaime Montes. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance as well as wet zoning the property. On April 24th, 2019, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Taylor Road and Griffin Parkway. The taqueria has been in operation for about one year now and they're applying for a conditional use permit because they want to add alcohol or beer to their menu. The proposed hours of operation are Sunday through Thursday from 11:30 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. and Friday through Saturday from 11:30 to 11:00 p.m. A total of 12 people manned the operation. As far as the sale of alcohol, Section 1.56, 3A of the zoning code requires that such uses be 300 feet away from the nearest residential areas. There is a residential subdivision just north of the existing taqueria. What the P&amp;Z and the City Council have done in the past is waive the separation requirement for other conditional use permits. There was no opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval of the conditional use permit. Staff is recommending approval subject to waiver of a 300-foot separation requirement from the residential neighborhoods and that the, and that the conditional use permit be valid for a period of two years, at which time the applicant will have to renew their TBC license. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1B is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against a conditional use permit? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against a conditional use permit? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against a conditional use permit? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against a conditional use permit? Ma'am, you had something to say? If you do come up, state your name and for the record, name and address, ma'am, for the record, and whether you're in favor or against.
Gracias. Vengo de representación de Jaime Montes. Eso es el propietario. Yo soy Grace Ramirez y es la que maneja la taqueria y su familia.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit? I do not see anybody come approaching the podium, therefore I'm going to close the public hearing and I'm going to open it for discussion by any of the council members or I will entertain a motion for adoption of two ordinances, ordinance 4788 and ordinance 4789.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 4788 and ordinance 4789. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Public hearing, 1.1C, conditional use permit. Mr. Azarell.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Item 1.1C is a public hearing for a conditional use permit to construct a 110-foot monopole cellular phone tower and associated ground equipment within a 50-by-50 leased area on property zoned AOI. This is at 612 South Schubach Road, being a .0574 acres out of 7.35 acres out of the south half of Lots 6 and 7 and 8 of Block 7 del Monte subdivision, excluding 33 feet of all of the lots, of the rest 35 feet of Lot 6 and excluding the northeast corner, .41 acres. Property zoned AOI, agriculture open in... Gracias. This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit? Say it to the mic, please, so the audience can not only hear, but where they're watching also say...
I don't remember her name, but the lady that spoke said that she's here representing Jaime Montes, the applicant, and that she's just here to answer any questions, and she's representing the taqueria.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit? I do not see anybody coming approaching the podium, therefore, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to open it for discussion by any of the council members, or I will entertain a motion for adoption of two ordinances, ordinance 4788 and ordinance 4789.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 4788 and ordinance 4789. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Public hearing 1.1C, conditional use permit. Mr. Osorio.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item 1.1C is a public hearing for a conditional use permit to construct a hundred-and-ten-foot monopole cellular phone tower and associated ground equipment within a fifty-by-fifty leased area on property zoned AOI. This is at 612 South Schubach Road, being a point zero-five-seven-four acres out of seven-point-three-five acres out of the south half of Lots 6 and 7 and 8 of Block 7 del Monte subdivision, excluding thirty-three feet of all of the lots, of the rest thirty-five feet of Lot 6, and excluding the northeast corner, point four-one acres. Property zoned AOI, agriculture open interim, and the applicant is Verizon Wireless. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On April 24th, 2019, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located near the one-mile-south and Schubach Road intersection along the west side of Schubach Road. Access to the site is provided through Schubach. There is an access easement office Schubach leading to the site so that the cell phone carriers can access the property and attach their necessary equipment. They are leasing a fifty-by-fifty section of the property, and they're constructing a hundred-and-ten-foot monopole tower. And since the towers will be within a private property, and the overall height is similar to other towers that we have approved in the city, we don't object to the construction of the cell phone towers, as it will increase or provide better coverage for Verizon cell phone customers. There was no opposition during the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, subject to the installation of a mesh screen around the perimeter fifty-by-fifty fenced-in area. We're also recommending that Verizon allow other cell phone tower companies to also co-locate on the proposed tower. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1C is now before you.
This is a public hearing and a conditional use permit. Anybody in favor or against this request?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. My name is Vince Heeringer, representing Verizon. It's full agenda, so I'll just answer any questions you have. It's a capacity site, which is really, because the other sites are overloaded, the apps are driving the system crazy, so, thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? I do not see anybody approaching the podium. I'm going to close this public hearing, and I'm going to open it for any of the council members or entertain a motion.
Yes, ma'am. I have a quick question. Jaime, what does co-locate mean? Like, is there a chance we could locate any future towers strictly on that land?
Co-locate just means to add another cell phone antenna onto the existing antenna.
But it's not like we could, like, in the future, anyone who wants an antenna has to put it there?
They just attach it to the existing tower that's going to be built.
Yeah, to the pole.
It's not two different antennas.
Yeah. It's not two separate antennas, correct. It's going to be the same antenna. They just attach their, I guess, antenna that looks like the one on top somewhere on the pole.
Good.
I move to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 4790. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The adoption of ordinance 4790 is approved. Still under public hearing, 1.1D, conditional use permit renewal. Mr. Osorio.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item 1.1D is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and outside consumption of alcoholic beverages at Areli's Celebration Hall. This is at 1905 West Griffin Parkway, being Lots 1 through 4, Southern Oaks Phase 1 subdivision. The property is owned C3, and the applicant is Daisy Vela. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On April 24th, 2019, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located five hundred feet west of Inspiration Road along the south side of Griffin Parkway. The seventy-two-hundred-square-foot building is currently used as a banquet and party hall for such activities such as weddings, reunions, birthday parties, seminars, et cetera. The business has been in operation since June 11 of 2014, with the most recent approval coming on March 14 of 2016, at which time the applicant was given a conditional use permit for a period of three years. The applicant has been operating here for the past three years without any complaints or incidents that were reported. The hours of operation are Friday through Sunday from 6:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. and Saturday from 6:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m. A total of ten to fifteen employees man the operation, depending on the size of the event. As far as the sale of alcohol, Section 1.56, 3A of the zoning code requires that such uses be three hundred feet from residential areas. There is a residential subdivision just south of Southern Oaks subdivision. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, subject to the waiver of the three hundred-foot separation requirement to the residential neighborhood, and that the CUP be valid for a period of two years, at which time the applicant will have to renew their TABC license. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1D is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against a conditional use permit renewal? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against a conditional use permit renewal? Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit renewal? This is a public hearing. I don't see anybody approaching the podium, therefore, I'm going to close the public hearing and open it for any of the city council members that want to comment, or I will entertain a motion for ordinance 4791.
I just have a question.
Go ahead, sir.
Do we have any parking, any lighting on the parking lot?
Yes. Initially, there was some issues with the parking lighting. They've installed two different types of parking. They have ground poles with actual street or parking lights, and they also have some wall packs on the building that project light onto the parking areas. So that was an issue in the past, and that matter has been resolved.
May I move to approve?
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second to approve ordinance 4791. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
No, it's okay.
1.1E.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item 1.1E is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and outside consumption of alcoholic beverages at Areli's Event Center, 1809 West Griffin Parkway, Lots 9 through 11, Southern Oaks Phase 1 subdivision. The property is owned C3 General Commercial, and the applicant is Daisy Vela. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On April 24th, 2019, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located five hundred feet west of Inspiration Road along the south side of Griffin Parkway. This is the second of two event centers. Both of them are located on the same commercial plaza. They're at Southern Oaks Phase 1. Same applicant, two different businesses. They both cater to the same type of activities, quinceañeras, weddings, and other birthday parties and seminars. And the hours of operation are also the same as the previous item, which are Friday through Sundays from 6:00 p.m. to 12:00 midnight, and Saturdays from 6:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m. A total of ten to fifteen employees man the operation, depending on the size of the event. And the sale of alcohol, Section 1.56, 3A of the zoning code requires that such uses be three hundred feet from the nearest residence, and like the other previous agenda item that was just approved, there are residences to the south of the proposed or of the existing event center. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, subject to the waiver of the three hundred-foot separation requirement, and that the conditional use permit be valid until January 23rd of 2021, at which time the TABC license will need to be renewed. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1E is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against conditional use permit renewal? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit renewal? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit renewal? I do not see anybody approaching the podium. I'm going to close the public hearing and open it for any city council person that wants to say anything.
Can I remember the last time these items were before us? Was when there was actually the widening of 495? And so there was a question on the landscaping that couldn't be done on the right-of-way? Did that situation get taken care of? And are there any landscape requirements?
There is landscaping. The applicant is here, actually, in the audience. He installed palm trees and a couple of green areas. He wasn't the original developer. This is something that should have been addressed with the original developer, but it wasn't. But he did address that issue, as well as the parking lights that were not in the...
Do you show a picture?
We showed the parking lights. I did see him on one of the exhibits. You see the pole there?
Yes.
On the previous item, I could see a little bit of the landscaping off to the side, not on this one, but on the previous one that we just saw. I don't know if you can go back, Alex, a couple of slides. You can see a little bit, like, he's got some green areas similar to what you see there on the right side of the picture.
But on 495, that wasn't allowed, or is there... I don't remember.
On 495, you have some swales for drainage, and they're green, but they don't have as much of the landscaping as what you see here.
Okay. I just remember that being a concern the last time they were here.
We already did around seven palm trees, but they all have to be in the...
In the swell?
Yeah, so it's kind of like...
Oh, you can't see them yet?
No, you can't see them.
Oh, okay.
They don't look as nice, because we did the whole red rock lava, nice grass, but you can't see it, because it's...
It's a swell.
Okay.
It's sunk.
All right.
Any other questions?
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Ordinance 4792 in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and ordinance 4792 is approved. I'm calling for consent item 2.0. Keep in mind consent agenda item, any of the items that is 2.1 or 2.2. If any of the council members want to individually pull them out, you're privileged to do that. And if not, I will entertain a motion to go 2.1 and 2.2 under consent agenda item.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.0 approved and authorization. 3.1, Mr. Osorio, preliminary plot approval.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item 3.1 is preliminary plot approval of Mayfair Residence subdivision Phase 1. This is being an eleven-point-eleven-acre tract of land out of Lots 7 and 8, and the east two acres out of Lot 6 of Reese subdivision. The property is owned R1, and the developers, Union Design Developers, the engineers, South Texas Infrastructure Group. On May 8th, 2019, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a hearing to review this proposed subdivision, and the developers proposing forty-two single-family residential lots, all exceeding the minimum R1 size requirements. Previously, a subdivision containing eighty-three lots was approved and was seen and approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission and the city council. However, the engineer and the developer have revised their proposal to split the project into two phases. This would be Phase 1, and then once they record it and sell a few lots, they'll come back and record the second half, being Phase 2. The one that is being considered now is along Stewart Road. Water Services and Sewer Services are also located along Stewart Road there. And in talking to the developer and the engineer, mostly utilities will be put in at this time, with the exception of paving the entire subdivision. They are getting a head start on the next phase, and they are putting all the water and sewer services before Phase 2 is brought in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission and city council. In talking to the developer, I did alert him that the park fees have changed since the last time that his eighty-three-lot subdivision was approved, so he's receptive to the additional fees that are associated with the park fees that are associated with the subdivision. And this is proposed as a private and gated subdivision. So we are recommending approval, subject to no objection to the variance, making this a private street. The subdivision code requires that each residential lot have access to a public road. Thus, the need for the variance, that they meet the model subdivision rules, that they comply with the street alignment policies, and that they pay the capital sewer and park fees. Item 3.1 is now before you.
Before I entertain a motion, I want for you to begin to standardize an additional bullet that drainage has been approved. You know, that bullet, just the way you have bullets here on city water and sewer...
Yes.
That the drainage is approved, that the planning and zoning addresses the issues of drainage on every new subdivision that's coming into our city.
We'll start doing that.
We already established a drainage committee, you know, that had its first meeting last week, I mean, yesterday. Was it yesterday?
Last week.
Last week. And we want to integrate it into the planning and zoning process, to make sure that every new subdivision that we address the issues, so we can prevent drainage problems instead of having the history of what we had in June of the incident.
Do you want us to start presenting these subdivisions to the drainage committee?
We are, that's what we're looking for. Let's look at the protocol first before we make any changes on that.
Okay. Sounds good, Mayor.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve, and we have a second. And this is opening for further discussion and discussion by any of the council persons. No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Preliminary plot approval is approved.
Thank you, Mayor.
3.2, approval of interlocal agreement. Mr. Salinas, details?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, city council members. I come before you seeking approval of interlocal agreement between Iowa Special Utility District and the City of Mission. Interlocal agreement entails a transfer of ownership and maintenance of Santerio Sewer Lift Station located at 2123 West 30th Street, Mission, Texas, from Iowa-Sed to the City of Mission. Santerio Sewer Lift Station only services the La Cienda State subdivision, which is located inside the City of Mission city limits and our Santerio Sewer CCN. Staff recommendation, Mayor, is approval of interlocal agreement with Iowa Special Utility District.
Do I hear a motion?
I have a question, Mayor, but I'll make a preliminary motion.
We have a motion and...
Second.
We have a motion and a second to, is it to approve or disapprove?
Approve.
Approve? Okay. To approve the item 3.2, and this is opening for discussion. Mr. Martinez?
Yes, sir. This was owned by Iowa-Sed. Now we're taking full ownership now.
Yes, the ownership, basically, council member, is the maintenance of the lift station. This lift station was built back in 2005. Approximately, the plat was approved, and this lift station only services La Cienda subdivision, which is inside the City of Mission city limits and our sewer CCN, which we service the sewer, and we charge for the sewer of this lift station.
Okay, so it doesn't service anybody outside the city?
No.
All right.
No, just the La Cienda subdivision.
I guess the question, my question is, why does Iowa-Sed own the lift station?
That was brought to... Yes, sir. That was brought to our attention by the manager, Mr. Eddie Science, on that. We had conversations. We visited the lift stations, and we looked at our sewer CCN maps, city limit maps, and everything falls into the City of Mission, I guess, ownership and maintenance. Why it was done like that back in 2005, Mayor, I don't have that answer, but we looked in research. We looked at for several interlocal agreements that were done at that time, and nothing appeared that was owned by the City of Mission at that time. So I guess Iowa took ownership and started doing maintenance, but didn't have any profit having that lift station maintained by them.
Mayor?
Yes.
I don't have a problem with the interlocal, but I'd like for legal to take a look at it, to make sure that there isn't any trading liability to it.
And what are the possibilities of us getting the ownership part?
The ownership part, we're, through this interlocal agreement, if I'm wrong, Mr. Bob, you can correct me, but through this interlocal agreement, we're going to start doing the maintenance, and yes, we're going to have the liability of that lift station. Yes, sir.
So, you know, might as well take the ownership, see what they tell you.
Yes.
From professional to professional talk.
And this was reviewed by Mr. Bob Gallegos prior to...
Yes, I reviewed it, and I don't see... I believe your question had to do with some liability.
Yeah, any trading, any, like, maybe, who knows what could be out there? Any lawsuits attached to it or whatever? lawsuit attached to it or whatever, you know?
Lawsuits pending.
No, I don't, I don't see any responsibility for that, unless, uh, I'm sorry, I don't know about any potential lawsuit attached, but I doubt that is the case, but.
Or any services.
We're just taking over the maintenance of it and ownership of it as it is now.
Yes, and, and other, I mean, other residence homes, if there's any issues, we, we attend to them anyhow.
Anyway.
Since, back since, since two thousand and five. It's just the, the lift station itself.
Any other questions?
No, sir.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries and approval of the interlocal agreement. Three point three, Mr. Salinas?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mayor, city council members, item three point three is the approval of the purchase of two horizontal split case high service pumps for the north and south water treatment plants from a sole source vendor. Uh, staff is recommended to purchase these two, uh, horizontal split case, um, high service pumps, uh, from Dynamic Pump Systems, a sole source vendor. Uh, south water treatment plant, uh, horizontal split case pump will be a two-hundred horsepower pump, and the north water treatment plant horizontal split case pump will be a, a hundred and fifty horsepower pump, which will be replacing the same pumps. Uh, attaches a sole source letter from our manufacturer, Crane Pump and Systems, listing Dynamic Pump Systems as authorized vendor for such pumps in Edelwee County, and of course, we have the, the description attached of the pumps, and staff is recommending authorization to purchase the two horizontal split case high service pumps, uh, from Dynamic Pump Systems, a sole source vendor, Mayor.
Do I hear a motion?
A motion to approve.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Quick question. Is it in the budget?
Yes, yes. Uh, uh, actually, uh, councilwoman, uh, it, it is part of our, uh, capital improvements, so it was approved as part of the, as part of the budget. Yes, ma'am.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries. Uh, three point three is approved. Three point four, Mr. Salinas?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mayor, city council members, item, uh, three point, uh, four is the authorization to approve. Uh, first one, we have renewal option for copper sulfate for the north and south water treatment plants. On June two thousand and eighteen, the City of Mission entered into contract with Chemtray Chemicals U.S. LLC for copper sulfate. Staff, uh, staff, staff is seeking authorization to extend contract for the first one-year renewal option at five percent increase in price. Uh, contract, uh, renewal will be from June twenty-six, two thousand and nineteen through June twenty-six, two thousand and twenty. Uh, staff, again, is recommended to extend contract for the first one-year renewal option with Chemtray Chemicals U.S. LLC.
I have a question, and it has a legal question, uh, Sir Galigan. With a, if we approve this at a five percent increase in price, it doesn't do anything to the previous year that we did, uh, the, the request for, for bids?
Uh, you can, uh, increase it up to five percent. That was in the, in the previous contract.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mayor, uh, last, uh, last read in two thousand and eighteen, we solicited for bids with an option to, uh, for a one-year renewal option, and this same bidder, uh, as, as you can see on the attachment on, on page one hundred and eighty, it has, uh, a five percent inc, I'm sorry, one hundred and seventy-nine, it has a, a five percent increase in price for the first, uh, one-year renewal option. Yes, sir. So it was included on the bid. If, if that was the question, it was included on the bid.
All bidders, all bidders were given a, a, a bona fide opportunity to, to bid at that price.
Yes, sir.
And, and they all, Mayor, just for clarification, they all, uh, expressed an increase in percentage for your, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I wanna thank you for doing a good job, putting all that in the agenda package. I did read it all, and it does give us the, the percentage of increase, and I did notice that the one that was the lowest, that's the second to the lowest, the increase was between two to seven percent, so it's an average.
Two to seven, yes, sir. Yes, sir, thank you.
So it's, it's there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve.
Do we have a motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second to approve three point four. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Three point four is approved. Mr. Salinas. Three point five, Mr. Salinas?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mayor, city council members, item three point five is the authorization to award bids for the reconstruction of existing lift station number thirty-five, which is located at the southeast corner of US eighty-three, which is Interstate Two and Glasgow Road. The City of Mission has accepted an open five bid responses for this project for the reconstruction of existing lift station number thirty-five. Staff recommends awarding to Garko Industries, Inc., who is the lowest responsible bidder meeting all specifications, for a total amount of two hundred and seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars with twenty-seven cents. Uh, lift station reconstruction entails the construction of a wet well, installation of new pumps with fittings, and electrical control panel. Staff recommendation, uh, Mayor, is to award to Garko Industries.
Are they, uh, have we done business with them?
Yeah, yeah, yes, sir. We have.
Satisfied with their?
Yes.
Mayor, I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve, the three point five. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, we have a second. Uh, this is open for further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Three point five is approved. Mr. Salinas?
Thank you.
Three point six, Mr. Salinas?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mayor, city council members, item three point six is the authorization to award bids for the rehabilitation of existing clarifier at the wastewater treatment plant. The City of Mission has accepted an open two bid responses, uh, for the rehabilitation of existing clarifier at the wastewater treatment plant. Staff recommends awarding to American Water Services LLC, who is the lowest responsible bidder meeting all specifications, for a total amount of fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Existing clarifier structural project entails a replacement of sledge breaks, uh, center mixing well, and restoration of existing walkway. Staff, uh, recommendation, Mayor, is to award bids to American Water Services LLC.
I would like to, uh, move to approve. I just have a question. You know, the number of complete workdays is about twenty-five days more for RGV with only difference of less than five hundred dollars.
I'll, I'll entertain your motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and this continue, Mr. Flores.
Does the number of days don't matter?
No, the, the number of days, uh, American Water Services, uh, the number of days they had was sixty days, uh, Mayor, and of course, RGV Industrial Machine Shop had, uh, more, more days, uh, for this, uh, project. However, uh, American Water Services was, uh, lowest bidder by five hundred dollars. So we, we made some phone calls, uh, for, uh, previous projects that they have done, and they have successfully completed same type of projects in different cities.
Any other questions, Mr. Flores?
No, no, Mayor, thank you.
Any other questions by any of the other council persons? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries. Three point six is approved. Mr. Salinas. Uh, three point seven, authorization to purchase bulletproof vest via a state-approved contract. Chief Dominguez?
Good evening, Mayor, city council. Item three point seven is authorization to purchase bulletproof vest via state-approved contract, buyboard contract number five zero seven dash one six. A total of thirty bulletproof vests to replace any vest that is five years or older as required by the National Institute of Justice Standards. The total amount of the purchase is twenty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty. The purchase of vest will be funded by the Bulletproof Vest Grant from the U.S. Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance. Staff and city manager recommend approval for this item.
Mayor, I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the three point seven. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Three point seven is authorized, uh, for purchase. Uh, Mr. Dominguez. Three point eight, authorization, Mr. Dominguez. Chief?
Item three point eight is authorization to accept the twenty nineteen clicket or ticket grant from the Texas Department of Transportation. The total amount of the grant awarded is a thousand, nine eighty-one and twenty-eight cents. The grant is designed to provide grant funds to increase seatbelt enforcement for both adults and young children throughout our community. There is no cash match for this grant. The grant is in effect from May seventeen through June fifth, twenty nineteen. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move for approval.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
I'll second, and I appreciate that nineteen hundred dollars. I mean, I was, I thought I was wrong, but it's just nineteen hundred, right?
Allo es allo. No, we, we get it, and that's usually the amount, sir. It's only, uh, about a two-to-three week, uh, period that they give, uh, communities throughout the valley, actually throughout the state, for this particular, uh, Memorial Week enforcement.
Any, any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries. Three point eight is, is approved. Chief Dominguez. Three point nine?
Three point nine, Mayor, city council, is authorization to enter into a state plan of operation between the state of Texas and the City of Mission Police Department regarding access, uh, Department of Defense property. The state plan of operation is in effect in order to track all property provided to our organization via the Department of Defense. Currently, our department has an MRAP vehicle that is, uh, assigned to our SWAT team for police operations. Staff and city manager recommend approval, uh, to engage into this plan.
I move for approval.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And we have a second, and open it for further discussion.
Aye.
No, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Three point nine is approved. Chief Dominguez?
Thank you.
Three point ten, Mr. Benson?
Good evening, Mayor, city council. I have it for you. Item three point, uh, ten is authorization to purchase a Skag turf tiger thirty-seven horsepower Vanguard sixty-one inch cut zero turn mower through, from MAE Power Equipment via state-approved buyboard contract five-two-nine point one-seven, in the amount of eleven thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve, Mayor. Second.
We have a motion and a second. I open it for discussion. There be no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Three point ten is approved. Mr. Benson. Three point eleven?
Thank you. Um, agenda item three point eleven is authorize Mayor to execute right-of-way easement for, to AEP Texas, Inc., for electrical service at the new Mission Tennis Center at Birdville Park. This right-of-way is required by AEP Texas for the permanent electrical service at the new tennis center at Birdville Park, twenty-four hundred North Stewart Road. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move for approval, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second to approve the three point eleven. Any questions by any of the council persons? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, Bob looked at the, at the agreement?
I, I've refu, I've, uh, read the, the easement.
Okay.
And it looks okay. I, I, it is subject, Brad, it goes to supply our equipment, right?
Yes, it's only for our equipment.
That's sole purpose for that.
Yes, it's only for the power supply, for the musco lighting, for the tennis courts, and also for the pro shop.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries. Three eleven is authorized. Mr. Benson?
Thank you.
Three point twelve, Mr. Terrazas? Terrazas.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. I come before you to present item three point twelve, approval of supplemental work for work authorization number twenty-five with LNG engineering related to the Inspiration Road Military Parkway Loop Project. Supplemental work authorization number two is for the removal of Los Cebanos Loop Road from the scope of work, as recommended by Tech Start, to be treated as an independent separate project. This work authorization decreases the original amount by a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars with sixty-three cents. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
Mayor, I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and this is open for further discussion by any of the council members. Mr. Martinez, you have the floor?
Uh, yes, I have a question, Mayor. Now, since we're removing this, uh, does Tech Start have an issue with us, not?
No, sir, that, that was a recommendation to remove it from the scope of work since we.
Oh, they recommended it?
Yes.
Oh, I thought that.
And they decreasing the price, right?
Yes.
And they decreasing the price.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, sir.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Three point twelve is approved. Three point thirteen, Mr. Terrazas?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Item three point thirteen, authorization to solicit bids for drainage improvements project for Irma Street. Improvements include to install a forty-two inch concrete pipe from Irma Street to drainage behind Meadow Creek subdivision. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
Mayor, I move to approve the authorization to solicit bids.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second. Uh, this is open for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries.
Thank you.
Wasn't it your birthday some, some day ago?
Yes, sir, today.
Yeah, happy birthday, Matt.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. Thank you.
Happy twenty-fifth birthday.
Twenty-one.
Yeah. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, sir, but, uh, it's, it's a good, a good day. Three point fourteen, Mr. Flores?
Yes, uh, Mayor, council for the record, David Flores, your deputy city manager. Uh, the attached map shows the two companies of AEP, uh, uh, Texas North Company and, uh, AEP Texas Central Company. What AEP is trying to do is to unify the two companies, uh, to create one, uh, one company and have a new baseline for distributed cost recovery factor, D-Surf, to determine the revenue requirements for transmission cost recovery, basically to, uh, to maintain their infrastructure. So, uh, the D-Surf and T-Surf model is currently based on two companies, which have two different, uh, recovery costs based on geographic, uh, geo-economic conditions. They're proposing, through the unification of the one company, to combine, to combine all recovery costs, uh, across the state of Texas. This would mean that some areas like Mission would pay more than their fair portion of the recovery cost. I did, uh, was in contact with, uh, with Thomas Prokata, with, uh, Lord Gosnick, uh, and recommending that we suspend AEP's request. This will give us additional ninety days to go ahead and, uh, negotiate with AEP. Chances are that we will, uh, end up, uh, declining the, the, the rate increase. There are sixty cities across the state that, that is also suspending as well. Staff and, uh, city managers recommending approval of suspension.
Do, do you recommend approval of the resolution, or is it?
It's, it's suspension. What that does just buys us another ninety days to, to, to see how all this plays out, Mayor.
The resolution has the model of a suspension inside.
That, that is correct, sir.
Okay, so, and accepting the resolution, we accept what you're recommending?
Correct, suspension.
Okay, so it's for the record and for the public, so they can, uh, understand. This would be resolution fifteen ninety-eight, you know? Do I hear a motion to approve?
Second. Good, Mayor, but I.
We have a motion and a second. You have a question, go ahead.
Real quick. Bob, does this require hiring any outside counsel?
Well, it, in this situation, it, it does require, it does, because these are specialized, uh, work that these people do out of Austin, and it were part, it'd be part of a consortium with other cities to do this, and the fees aren't paid by us, and court, and the resolution sets that out. The fees are paid by AEP, charged to AEP.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? No other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Uh, motion passes. Resolution fifteen ninety-eight is approved. Mr. Flores, thirteen fifteen?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Uh, item three point fifteen is the approval of the, an agreement with Easy Links Golf LLC and Sherry Municipal Golf Course. Easy Links Golf LLC services include a website, email, point-of-sale suite, and mobile app for viewing monthly specials and making tee times reservations. Easy Links will manage those, um, social media sites and, uh, apps. Uh, in return, we will offer them two paid, uh, tee times per day as a, uh, service for the fifteen hundred dollars per month, as, in lieu of this pride paying that, we give them two tee times per day. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Mayor, I saw something I should have caught before.
Go ahead, sir.
And, and legal, on the legal form of that, so I would recommend if you're going to approve this, approve it subject to, uh, legal review.
Okay.
I move to approve, subject to legal review.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, uh, subject to legal review, three point fifteen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries, your approval of an agreement. Three sixteen, Mr. Salinas?
Yes, sir. Um, good evening, uh, Mayor, city council members. Item three point sixteen is the authorization to award bids for the purchase of ready-mixed concrete for the public works and parks and recreational department. The City of Mission has accepted an open one bid response for the purchase of ready-mixed concrete. Staff recommends awarding bid to Kappa Magic Valley Concrete, who is the sole bidder, meeting all specifications with a bid at a hundred and five dollars per cubic yard. Orders will be placed on a designated basis throughout the one-year term. Again, Mayor, staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do I, we have a motion and a second, and this is open for further discussion by any of the council members. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 3.16 is authorized.
Thank you.
3.17.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I bring before you item 3.17, authorize staff to execute contract to Inohosa Engineering Inc. for structural engineering services for spear memorial, library, and museum roof designs. After negotiation with Inohosa Engineering Inc. and according to Texas Government Code 2254.004, contract for professional services, architect, engineer, surveyor, a fair and reasonable fixed percentage rate of seven percent of the total construction cost was agreed upon. Attached, you will find the proposal agreement presented by Inohosa Engineering for your consideration. Staff's recommendation is to award contract to Inohosa Engineering for professional roof design services.
Do I hear a motion?
Oh, I make a motion.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Is the seven percent pretty much reasonable?
Yes, sir. That has been the norm for the city.
Second.
We have a second. In this, I open it for further discussion by any of the board members.
Yeah, it's a small question. How about the architectural part of this?
Yeah, that was my question, too.
Yeah, it will be determined once Mr. Inohosa gets an opportunity to go in there and assist the building itself to make that determination.
Right, but the council will still be involved in the decision, not just...
Of course. We'll be working with Mr. Inohosa throughout the design phase.
So before it goes to the architect, we'll have a report from him to...
That is correct.
Okay.
He'll do preliminary design assessment, and then he'll present the results to us. That's how we're going to determine the overall cost of the project.
Oh.
Yes, well...
But that's before the architect gets involved?
Before, yes.
Okay, okay.
We'll follow through with Mr. Inohosa and working hand-in-hand with them so we can make sure that we control the cost of the projects.
Okay.
You have an idea how much this is going to cost us?
No, sir, we don't.
Seven million or something?
It's very preliminary right now.
Yeah. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 3.17 is approved. Bilmaris, and 3.18?
Item 3.18, authorization to award contract to DNM Leasing for the lease of city vehicles. Staff received five proposals for the lease of city vehicles and equipment. Proposals were referred to a committee for the evaluation on the basis of the criteria that was adopted for the procurement. Staff is seeking authorization to award contract to DNM Leasing for the lease of city vehicles. DNM Leasing will be providing a fleet management program that entails maintenance and repair, management, cost savings, GPS telematics, e-logs, fuel management, and interactive dashboard performance reporting. Staff will work with DNM Leasing to phase the program in over an eighteen to twenty-four month period to lower the average age of the city fleet, reduce operating costs, and achieve long-term sustainability. Quarterly reviews and annual assessments will be conducted to ensure program's efficiency. Staff's recommendation is authorize staff to award contract to DNM Leasing.
Do I hear a mission, do I hear a motion?
I move to approve.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the authorization as requested by Mr. Bilmaris. Open it for discussion.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
We're hiring someone to manage our fleets. Is that essentially what we're doing?
We're hiring someone to deliver leased vehicles to us and present a program to us that will help us manage the maintenance, the data reporting, the program itself, to make us more efficient and effective.
And why, why do we need this? Are we having issues with fleet or management?
The reason we approach this because we have an aging fleet, and so we're in the program to be able to lease the vehicles, to be able to implement a plan to replace the vehicles versus purchasing one or two a year. We're going to be able to lease more to be able to phase out. We're spending quite a bit on repairs for aging fleet, and so this gives us an opportunity for cost savings.
So the goal is to replace the fleet sooner than later?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
So do we know how many units you're going to replace?
Once we award, they're going to come in and do an overall assessment of our entire fleet, and they're going to prioritize the list of vehicles that really need, are in desperate need of replacing, and they'll present that information to us and the data.
Okay.
And we'll have the option to select the number of vehicles based on what we can ask per budget.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Yes. It's going to be a lot of vehicles.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 3.18 is authorized, Mr. Bilmaris. 3.19?
Mayor, just wanted to mention that DNM Leasing is here, just in case you have any questions for them.
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Item 3.19, authorize staff to solicit for request for information for the city of Mission self-insured workers' compensation insurance. Staff is seeking authorization to solicit for RFIs for full self-insured workers' compensation benefits for city employees. City will seek RFIs to possibly entertain cost-saving measures, complete control management of claims, and achieve long-term self-sustainability. City Mission is inviting third-party administrators to documentate and workers' compensation programs for consideration in order for the city of Mission to gain knowledge and awareness for future procurements. Staff's recommendation, authorize staff to solicit for RFIs.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 3.19 is authorized, Mr. Bilmaris.
Thank you, Mayor.
3.20, Ms. Carrillo.
Yes, Mayor and Council. Item 3.20 is to reschedule the May twenty-seventh, 2019 city council meeting to Wednesday, May the twenty-ninth. Mayor and Council, this is due to city hall being closed on Monday for Memorial Day and also a conflicting city event that we have on Tuesday. I believe this is the awards ceremony for the Boys and Girls Club, so we are requesting to move the meeting to Wednesday.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second? Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 3.20 is approved, Ms. Carrillo. 3.21, Ms. Bella.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item 3.21 is approval of the March 2019 financial statements. The total unadjusted ending fund balance was twenty-seven million one eighty-six six hundred and ten dollars. Total revenues for the month were seven million five thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars, and total expenditures were ten million six hundred and seventy-four thousand five hundred and eighty-seven dollars, leaving an unadjusted ending fund balance of twenty-three million five hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred and three dollars, of which four point two million is in general fund. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move for approval.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. In this, I open it for any final questions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 3.20, correction, 3.21 is approved. 3.22, Ms. Bella.
Item 3.22 is approval of the attached budget amendments. We have two, one in the PD Federal Sharing Fund and one in the Designated Purpose Fund. In the PD Federal Sharing Fund, we have revenues and expenditures of twenty-four thousand seven hundred and eight dollars, which are revenues from the U.S. Justice DEA of the Federal Sharing Program, which will be used in police supplies, travel and training, office supplies, and machinery and equipment for the police department. And in the Designated Purpose Fund, we have the grant revenue of one thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars for the Clickid or Ticket grant that was approved earlier today with expenditures of the same, which will be used in salaries and benefits for the program, for the police department.
Mayor, I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, open for further discussion. No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes, 3.22 is approved, Ms. Bella.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. 4.0 is unfinished business. I have none unfinished business on file, so I move to 5.0, routine matters. 5.1, Mr. City Manager's comment. Mr. Pittis.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor. Just wanted to reiterate what Chief Zaldaña mentioned regarding the Makero Cookoff. I want to thank the departments that participated in that event, and then also the Tardeada Zapateada Cinco de Mayo at La Placita Park. Appreciate the effort and the assistance with those two successful events. We didn't receive a lot of positive feedback from the community regarding those community events, and look forward to more community events like that. Thank you.
As the mayor, 5.2, I just want to welcome Ms. Thompson back, you know, to, it's nice to see her, you know, obviously the bars have been here very consistently, so just want to recognize you, Ms. Thompson. You're looking well. I like that, you know. 5.3, City Council comments. I'll start from Mr. Martinez.
Just a real quick one, Mayor. I mean, after the public comment on the animal cruelty part, whatever, I don't know if we're doing enough, but let's enforce those laws if we can. Chief, I mean...
In some of those cases, they love our eye practice.
Okay, yeah.
So it's not just the police department...
Right. To prosecute, yeah. Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
I have no comment.
Ms. Gaza?
Thank you.
Mr. Plata?
So, I kind of wrote a little something saying, you know, I am a big advocate for the animals of our city. So the city of Mission has taken big steps to help our stray unwanted animals for the past couple of years. We will continue to work together with our police department and our district attorney's office to fight animal abuse with a hope to end animal abuse in the future.
Any other comments?
That's all.
Yeah. I'd like to call 6.0, executive session pursuant to VTCA Government Code Section 551.001. I want to entertain a motion.
So moved here.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We will enter into executive session, and as soon as we take care of business, we'll come out and deliver it to the public. Thank you all for waiting. I will entertain a motion from an executive session pursuant to VTCA Government Code Section 551.001. Back in session.
Second.
Mr. Plata, and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, we're back in session. 6.1, consultation on 6.1A. Mr. Attorney.
There be no action on...
There will be no action on 6.1A. Thank you, Mr. Attorney. 6.1B. There will be no action on 6.1B. Am I correct?
That's correct.
The attorney will be, I will entertain a motion to have the city attorney respond to the 6.1C. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 6.1C. Mr. Attorney, you are authorized to send a letter as discussed in the executive session. 6.1D. Do I hear a motion?
I move to adopt the evaluation form for city manager position.